Okay, and with that, and I see Commissioner Teal joining us via audio, so I reflect that he is here as well. I call this Planning Commission meeting to order on Tuesday, September 20th, 2022, at 6:30 PM. I will now read the COVID protocol notice. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions. Actually, it's 6:32, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if this is 6:30. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of Government Code, Section 5495-3, as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The Governor of California proclaimed a state of emergency relative to COVID-19 on March 4th, 2020. This teleconference meeting is necessary so the town can conduct essential business and is permitted under Government Code, Section 5495-3, in order to protect public health and the safety of attendees. Now, take the roll call. Vice Chair Lester.
Here.
Commissioner Bodie.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Hi.
Commissioner Helber.
Here.
Commissioner Polski is not here this evening. Commissioner Teal.
Here.
And I Chair Hillisam here. We are also joined by Town of Maraga staff, including Planning Director Hamid, and I think we have Assistant Town Attorney Karen Murphy. I also see Planner Brian Horn, the Public Works Director Sean Knapp, and who is it running the, uh, the meeting for us? I heard her voice come on. Is that Mary Jane?
It's Susan, Susan Mill.
Yeah, this is Susan Gilli, and then it's the干事 for the Planning Department.
Hello again, Susan. So, we'll move to conflicts of interest. Do any commissioners have any conflict of interest to report? Seeing none, we can move on. Contact with the applicants has, have any of the commissioners had contact with the applicant? Seeing no. We're going to move to Pledge of Allegiance, and I will do it this evening, since I didn't ask anyone else to. So, hold up my flag. Wait for folks to get ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I, uh, when I say that, I instinctively want to say, please be seated from, from school. Moving now to public comments. This time is reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the Planning Commission. The audience should be aware that the Commission may not discuss details or vote on non-agenda items. Your concerns may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Note, public input will also be taken during each agenda item. If there are any public comments at this time, please utilize the raise hand feature of this webinar. I will call on you. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes. Check to see if anyone is raising their hand. Looks like we do have three attendees, but I don't see any hands raised. So, I will close public comment. And now, we move on to adoption of the consent agenda. We have one item on tonight's agenda, and I apologize, I did, uh, let staff know of this prior to meeting. I'm going to ask for this item to be removed from consent and deferred to a future meeting. There was some clarification that was requested of staff regarding some differences that were noted between these minutes and minutes of the past. Can I get a second on, on my, my motion to pull and defer to a future meeting?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Davis. I will now call, roll call, Vice Chair Lester.
I on deferring.
Uh, Commissioner Bodie.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Hi.
Commissioner Helber.
Hi.
Commissioner Polski is not here. Commissioner Teal.
Hi.
And I Chair Hillisam, also an eye on deferring. So, now we move on to option or adoption of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Vice Chair, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I heard, I heard a couple there. I think that Ben Helber may have gotten there first. So, I'll give it to him. So, I'll call the roll. Vice Chair Lester.
Hi.
Commissioner Bodie.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Hi.
Commissioner Helber.
Hi.
I am going to drop mentioning that Commissioner Polski is not here as we know this. So, Commissioner Teal.
Hi.
And I Chair Hillisam, also here, the measure passes unanimously. Or the, we unanimously adopt the meeting agenda. We now move on to, let's see, let me have. Give me one second. We now move on to public hearings. The first item under public hearings is a public hearing for 301 Constance Place exterior side yard fence. I believe that staff has a presentation for us this evening. Director Hamid, would you like to say anything before we, before staff provides their presentation?
Yes, this item is before us because of two issues. The first is that there was work done on the Canyon Road Bridge, as you are all aware, and it impacted this property as well in terms of its fence and in terms of its privacy. So, we are working with the applicant to get that resolved and get that fence back. And the second reason that it's before us is because it's along the scenic floor. So, anything higher than 2K does come to the planning mission. So, I will have Plan Horn give his presentation.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Plank Commissioners. I'm going to share my screen here for a second. Let's see. So, does everyone see the presentation on there?
Yes.
Thank you. So, yes, this is a request for an eight-foot-tall fence, and it requires designer view board approval and a variance due to the height of the fence and location along the scenic corridor. So, here's a brief overview. We'll go just briefly over the project details, discussion that's outlined in the staff report as well, the sequel, and then the recommendation. So, the property is located in Southern Maraga, north of Canyon Bridge, at the intersection of Constance Place and Canyon Road. The front of the home faces Constance Place with the side and rear of the residence visible from Canyon Road. The area is primarily single-family residential and is zoned three dwelling units per acre. And then, it's just as you can see here, so here's, you know, residential here. Behind here is where the East Bay Mud property is, and the landslide occurred that caused the Canyon Bridge to be reconstructed. And then, you have JM over on, onto the, to the east of the site. So, the proposal is to reconstruct the fence. So, they already have the existing six-foot fence, which they've reconstructed a portion of. And they want to put about 48 feet of the northern portion of the fence would be reconstructed to seven feet in height. And so, that's this portion right here. And the 48 feet includes the portion that connects to the existing home, which is about 12 feet. And then, they're also proposing to do about 44 feet of eight-foot-tall fence here. And so, the, in both cases, there would be, well, there'd be a foot of trellis on the seven-foot portion and two feet of trellis on the eight-foot portion. And then, the remainder of the fence, which is off, off the screen over here, would be left in its current, current condition. And here's another map that shows the aerial view of the fence. So, you can see the orange is the seven-foot portion. The blue is the two-foot, eight-foot portion with two-foot lattice. And then, the green is the remainder portion, which actually goes off the property a little bit and into the right way, right there. And here's what the fence would, would look like. No, sorry, this is what the trellis would look like on top of the fence. That's the design they're proposing. Going back to this, to this slide here, the applicant intends to stain the fence, a dark stain, which he would leave for, I believe, a couple of years is his plan. And then, his eventual plan is to repaint it to match the existing fence, which is this maroon color, which matches the, the trim on the house. So, there's findings that need to be made for the fence. First finding, fence finding is compatibility with the aesthetics of the neighborhood. The proposed wooden fence with the lattice is a common fence design within the town. In general, the fences along this portion of Canyon Road do not include lattice. In this case, the lattice will provide additional height for privacy desired by the applicant and also will serve to break the fence up and create some visual interest on the fence. And the other finding is that it does not create a sight obstruction for the Maraga Municipal Code. In this case, it would be farther than 25 feet from the intersection of Canyon Road and Constance Place, and it would be more than 15 feet from any intersection of the driveway and in any road. Additionally, so the scenic corridor guidelines are more, more general in this area. They stipulate that buildings and landscaping should be visually compatible with surrounding development and terrain and that existing topography, vegetation, and scenic features of the site should be retained. The subject property is developed, as you see, with a single-family residence and landscaping and accessory uses. In this case, the fence will provide screening for the exterior side and rear yard and screen it from the views of Canyon Road, providing privacy and security for the, for the property. Fence would be in character with other fencing found in this area of Canyon Road. And as you see, some, these are just some street view, and you can see this area of Canyon Road is, has the, the rear of many homes inside exterior side yards of homes. So, there's, there's fencing along both sides of the, of the road there. And for the eight portion of the fence, a variance findings must be made. So, the first finding is that, you know, is the variance is necessary for, due to special circumstances of the subject property. In this case, the, the road has been elevated, so the lots, it'll lower elevation than the roads. And more specifically, the area, as you get closer to the bridge, the bridge was elevated approximately, Public Works estimated at least four to five feet. So, as you go, the approach to the bridge starts around that, and then it goes lower, obviously, as you get further away from the bridge. But the eight-foot portion is located back, you know, towards the rear of the yard, because that's the area that was most impacted by the, by the bridge being elevated. And number two, it won't be a grant of special privilege. In this case, due to the increase in height of Canyon Bridge and the approach, the increased height is needed to maintain privacy similar to other properties along Canyon Road. And then, the third is that it meets the intent of the zoning district. The intent and purpose of the 3D A zoning district is to provide a residential environment consisting of low density detached single-family homes, consistent with the general plan. The general plan's residential land use goal is to maintain a high-quality residential environment consisting primarily of single-family homes. The proposed eight-foot-high fence would be consistent with this goal by providing the property with similar privacy and security from Canyon Road as other homes in the area that have six-foot-high fences. The design of the fence would be vertical wood boards and lattice top, which is styled as commonly found within this neighborhood and throughout the town. Again, here's another picture of some of the fences along Canyon Road. So, the pros project is categorically exempt under CECL 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures. And it's staff's recommendation, the Planning Commission adopt this resolution approving the variance and design review for the fence. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you for the report. We will now move on to the Commissioner question section of the item. And before we get started there, I just wanted to, to make all of the commissioners aware of a change in procedure for how we will handle commissioners' questions. I've talked to several of you about this. We're going to move from to a round robin style. So, I'd ask that, I'm not going to allow folks that have the, the most burning questions to go first, and then I've asked you to keep it to one question and then move on. And we will continue going around and round robin until all questions are exhausted. I also ask that questions asked be germane to the topic that we are discussing. And to the extent possible, I would ask that if you, if context provided as, as to your questioning is appropriate, but I ask you to keep your context brief. And with that, I will open up Commissioner questions. Do any commissioners have questions at this time? I see the Vice Chair.
Thank you. Question, who is responsible for the landscaping on this outside portion of the fence along the road at this point? It probably got messed up due to the building of the, the bridge, right, and doing the road and everything. So, who now has to replant vegetation outside that fence? That's my question. Is that the homeowner or the town?
Yeah, it's good to see if Sean was.
I am hearing, if you can hear me. I, okay, for some reason, my video is not working, but Sean Knapp, Public Works Director, in that area along that, the side of their home is a bio swell, which was required as part of the permitting. It's kind of a sump to collect water that comes off the roadway in the, in the area adjacent to it. It's meant as a, as a low, low-water type using low, short-type shrubbery, meant to be sustainable over time. And it's, it's not going to be similar to what someone would have with a, a front yard with grass and such. It is landscaped currently, and it will grow with, as the weather comes on and the seasons, they will, additional plantings from the seedings will, will take sprout. And, and sure, go, of course.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and thank you, Public Works Director. Any other commissioners with questions? I see Commissioner Teal.
Yeah, briefly, Brian, do we know kind of along what length the road was elevated? And if there are potentially other homes along that stretch that might seek the need for a similar elevation of their existing fence?
Um, I believe that the only portion of road that was elevated was basically the bridge and then the approach to the bridge to, to connect there. I heard, like, talking to the applicant, that I think the neighbor beyond him kind of felt their privacy may have been impacted too. But I think perhaps by having the, you know, the increased height of his fence, that would solve that issue as well. But that's, that's my understanding. But I, but every, you know, all the other homes, I believe this is the only home impacted that's directly on Canyon Road.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. I see Commissioner Bodie with his hand raised.
Yes, thank you. I have one question, and it specifically pertains to this drawing here. And, and it just caught my eye when I was reading through this yesterday, but the current fence, it, it's, it's a straight line. And my, my, my question was, what, why is it then going staggered, right? Why are we going to, uh, you know, the one foot extra, and then there's a stagger, and then it goes to the two feet of lattice? Why not just make it consistent with the height of the fence? That's my only question.
And just consistent all the way along the whole, the whole length of it?
Yeah.
I believe, and again, talking with the applicant, that he was, you know, trying to not go above what he thought he needed. So, you know, the, the road was less elevated towards the front of the home. So, the, you know, the impacts there were not as much as, as you get further towards the bridge. And then, that's why he's going, proposing to go up to eight feet in height. That's, that's my understanding there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Bodie. Any other commissioners with questions?
Hi.
See Commissioner Davis.
Director Knapp, I was wondering if it's actually true that you don't know the elevation of the road on a newly constructed piece of road?
Are you ask, are you asking about individual locations? We have, we have survey data up and down the roadway. I, I don't know what the question is.
We were told by planning staff today that they don't know the elevations, and therefore, we used a general description of the road being several feet higher at this property. I was just curious if we really don't.
Through the chair, Commissioner Davis, is this the question that you already asked earlier, and we responded to?
You, your staff, ma'am, told me.
Yes, we, we consulted with the engineering division and with the engineering staff, and that's how we responded. So, we collaborated before responding to you.
And so, what I'm asking, clarification of Director Knapp is,
Sure.
Does this town really not know the elevation of a brand-new piece of road? I, I mean, I would be very, very surprised, and
Yeah.
I would understand your answer a little bit.
Sure, Commissioner Davis, all we can do is respond to what you know, which has already been provided to you, which are, you know, planning department or the engineering department. Brian, would you please just repeat that?
Sure, yeah, I mean, I, well, my understanding was we didn't have an elevation of the previous, you know, the previous condition. So, we didn't have a way to compare with the height of the new portions are versus the, the previous portions. That's.
Okay. Um. I'm not sure it's logical, but I'll take that as an answer. Thank you, Planner Horn.
Um.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be my only question. I'm, I'm amazed that we would not know the elevation of any road, culvert, or drainage ditch in this town, because that's standard practice in some places. But perhaps.
Commissioner.
But thank you, that's all I had to ask.
Thank you for your question, and thank you, staff, for, for the response. I, uh, just for the, the rest of the Commission's interest, Director Hamid, I don't know if the, the response to that question got forwarded to other commissioners, but we may share that with them as well, just so that they have that. But my understanding is it's fairly well surmy, or the summary was provided by, by Planner Horn. So, thank you for that. Any other questions from, from the Commission? Seeing none, I do not have any questions. And at this time, we will open the public comment portion of this meeting as it pertains to this item. If anyone from up, and I do know that before I get there, should I actually, I did see that the applicant was present. Do we know whether or not the applicant had anything that they wanted to present or offer to us prior to opening public comment?
Um, I think you could, you could open public comment and just ask him to, to go first. I, I'm not sure if he had a comment or not, but he's here for questions.
Got it. At this time, we will open the public comment portion of this meeting as it pertains to this item. If anyone from the public wishes to speak on the item, please utilize the raise hand feature of this webinar, and we will call on you. And remember to state your name and address for the record. You will be given three minutes. So, looking over at public comment, I do not see that anyone has raised their hand. So, with that, I will now close public comment, and we will move to the public, or the Commissioner or comment portion of the meeting. Just like with, with questions, this is going to be round robin. I would prefer to take this in alphabetical order. If folks are not ready when I call on you, we can come back. But to that, I will first call on Commissioner Bodie.
Thank you, Chair Hillis. Probably my, my, my only comment, I, I keep going back to my question was around the cheese. And, and I know we don't have a visual of how it's going to look. So, part of it is just how, you know, how my brain is translating it. But I think that step is going to look just not as, not as visually appealing as the, as the current fence line. That's, that's my, that's my only comment. I, I, I'm totally on board with what they're trying to do. I get it that because the sidewalk's been raised, there's now, you know, a loss of privacy. Totally get it. I'm just, just, I keep eyeballing this picture and thinking that a straight line may look more aesthetically pleasing from the street.
Hey, Commissioner Bodie, I'm just wondering, we could reopen public comment. Did you want to ask a question of the applicant? Just so I know that Planner Horn did provide his personal assessment, but would you like to ask the applicant for more about that particular item?
Yeah, yeah, I would. And perhaps it's something that they consider.
Okay, with that, I will reopen the, the public comment portion of the meeting. I believe that Donald Potter may be the applicant. If you, Commissioner Bodie, Mr. Potter, if you've got Commissioner Bodie's question, feel free to respond to it, or if you'd like to ask him to restate it.
No, I think I understood it. Am I, can you see me? I don't see that I'm on there.
We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, and that's all you really need, right?
That's all we need.
Yes.
Oh, and now you're back on mute.
Sorry. Okay. The reason for the step from seven feet to eight feet was I was trying to do as little as possible that was beyond what the town would have normally wanted. The town is comfortable with seven-foot fences. And when we went to the eight-foot, the town was, uh, they said, well, we don't usually do that. So, we originally planned to do seven feet until we had to go to eight in order to keep, you know, the normal-sized people from looking straight in to the backyard. I, if you would prefer that we do eight feet all around, that's no problem with me. Each time I had to make a decision on this, I was trying to do it with, in keeping with what the town was trying to do. For example, we did rebuild the whole fence because we felt we could use the existing shrubbery and the existing fence and just not have to rebuild the whole thing. So, I, I was, I was simply trying to find a way to respond to the, the town's needs as I saw them.
Understood. Then, that makes sense, right? So, it would either be an eight-foot fence all the way along, uh, or you're going to have the step as it's currently proposed. I, I get it. Okay. Thank you.
And since we, thank you for that question, and thank you, Mr. Potter. Do, since we do have the applicant on the line, do any other commissioners have any questions for him before we reclose public comment? I see Commissioner Teal with his hand raised.
Yeah, thank you. I said, just to be more direct, would the applicant prefer that it was a continuous eight-foot fence? I think where Commissioner Bodie and myself would be leaning, just from a visual aesthetic standpoint, it would look continuous to have it as eight-foot. Is that something you would prefer, or are there costs or other limitations that would lead you to preferring the, the current design, having it step up from seven feet to eight feet?
No, I don't have any, I, I don't have any particular, I just wanted the, the privacy back.
Sure, well, well understood.
Uh, I, if you want eight feet, eight feet is fine with us.
Got it, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that?
Please proceed.
This picture of what we're seeing, these posts are in already, right? So, if you want to go eight feet, you're going to have to rip out the post and reset them where they're cut. Oh, gosh, that may be right. I don't, uh, yeah, I think those first few posts are really geared to a one-foot lattice. That is, that's probably right.
So, with that information, gee, still on eight feet?
Are you asking me if I want an increase to my allowance? No, I, I don't want to tear that thing down. I mean, it's the, the basis of what it's going to be is there. And you're absolutely right, that, those posts probably are too low for a two-foot lattice.
I see Commissioner Davis with his hand raised.
Commissioner Bodie, may I make a, a friendly amendment to your, your half-made proposals there? Your half made proposals there? Would that be all right with you if I? If I suggested that what we should do as a commission? Is allow Mr. Potter to build his fence to seven and or eight feet as he sees fit. And Mr. Potter, I would note that you could add some. Some cripple posts, one foot long cripple posts to the top of your structure and have a perfectly satisfactory eight foot fence all the way along. Without having to replace your main posts. Um. But either way, I get the sense that this commission would be happy with you building the seven and or eight foot fence that you wish to have. Hopefully, I spoke well enough, but that didn't scramble anything.
Uh.
Is that okay with you?
Could I use that term? Did you say cripple post? I don't know what that is.
A cripple post would be assisted four by four. In this case, on the top of the four by fours you have. With a sistering device, either a pin in the center or perhaps a splice plate. It would be held in place primarily. By the cap rail. That's going to secure your panels. And the panels, of course, help hold that in as well. Your fence post doesn't actually have to be as tall as your as your panel buttons. It would it would work just fine. Um particularly if you sealed the joint. I don't mean to advise, but I do mean to suggest that I've seen it done before where somebody had to take a fence post. And reduce it down to a usable piece and then sister in new material above.
Okay.
And if if I may, I I do think that uh the the language that Commissioner Davis proposed. Um uh is is would cover the discussion. And I think that um Mr. Potter, if if more. Um information is needed on the uh on the uh. The the cripple post arrangement that Commissioner Davis was suggesting. Um Commissioner Davis, perhaps you might be willing to offer your uh contact information to Mr. Potter. And we can discuss and you could discuss it after the meeting. I do think it it might resolve that. Um uh did we have? Thank you, sir. Um do we have any other questions for for Mr. Potter before we uh move back to Commissioner comments? Seeing none.
Chair. Yes.
I have one question. Um to the applicant. Is. Are you landscaping the outside of the fence area or is the city? With with the exception of the bi remediation area?
The um. The the answer is yes and no. Um the the new bridge moved. A sidewalk. Which used to be. Adjacent to the property, moved it out by. I'd say eighteen inches to three feet, maybe four feet. I am uh I'm trying to get a guy to come in. And put sod in there so it matches up with the yard. Uh until it gets to. Where we didn't use to um. Landscape anyway. So we're going to add a little bit of sprinkler and put sod in there. And so the the whole. Uh front yard will be contiguous in grass again. Um. Uh as you know, getting people to do anything these days is a very long and arduous process. So. I don't even know what that's going to take yet, but I've got a guy that said he will try to do it. Beyond that point, when you get to the edge of the fence. Actually, where you get to where our shrubbery s- uh s-. Stops in the front. That's all. It's actually uh. All already been landscaped by that spray procedure. And it's a it's sort of a deep hole. It's like four or five feet deep all the way back until you get right next to the fence. So there won't be any landscaping by us. I think it's all some kind of. Some kind of grass. I I I have no idea what it actually looks like. Uh because I didn't get a vote, but um. It it's out of my hands.
I a a follow up question is. The the fence line itself is fairly stark, and I understand there are. Obstacles or restrictions of where you can plant landscaping to buffer that visual look and you. I know you can't plant anything in. The bi remediation area that would be. Substantially vertical. Uh is your intention to put some type of landscaping on either side of it to soften that a little bit? That would have more verticality to it? I can see.
We do have landscaping. On the inside of the fence. Um. It's very difficult to make it grow because there's so much shade there. Now, we've got very fifty year old tall trees. So there's a lot of shade and things just don't grow. I've got. I planted laurels back there, which should have been able to grow to the fence height. I did that seven years ago and it's still at deer eating height. So it's not going anywhere. Now, um the other side, really, I'm a little worried about the other side because that. That hole or that swale that they've got. Starts immediately next to the fence. I mean, you can see the old, well, you can see some of the um. Roots from the trees that they dug through. I mean, it literally starts right on the other within three inches of that fence. So there's nothing, you can't. You can't plant there. Uh I don't think, I'm not sure it I'd be allowed to plant there, but I wouldn't think that um. I I don't think you can do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the question and thank you for your responses, Mr. Potter. Um do we have any other commissioner questions for Mr. Potter before we close public comment? Seeing none. Um thank you, Mr. Potter, for uh for answering our questions. And also because we did open public comment. Uh and I think that we have at least uh one other participant. Um do it do anyone? Does anyone else in the audience have questions at this time? Or comments? Seeing no hands raised, I will close, reclose public comment and move on to commissioner questions. Um and I um. I'm just gonna, if you if you can oblige me, go back to Commissioner Bodie as he had the initial question. Uh and I wanted to see if you had a a comment you'd like to offer now, following the conversation with the applicant.
Uh sure, uh you know, so based on everything I heard, I want to give the applicant or, you know, it's my opinion to give the applicant as much privacy as possible, and that would be an eight foot fence, which I would be perfectly fine with. And. Um I am going to, I'm going to defer to the experts uh like Carl when it comes to building fences. I know nothing about this, but it sounds like that's a workable solution. And if it would be aesthetically pleasing from the roadway. Looking at the house and if it would solve Mr. Potter's concern for maximum privacy. Um it sounds like a win win. Again, I don't know. Anything about building fences.
That's it. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Commissioner Bodie. Um and now I will move to Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Davis, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I would. Thank you, Chair Ellis. Um I'd like to mention that. For the for all the commissioners, in case you didn't see it, the Chief King weighed in on the six foot, seven foot, eight foot fence. And he has no complaint with that fence at eight feet. He even sees advantage. Um it was a concern that I I asked and Chair Hillis carried forward. And town staff responded back in a in a note. I thought we'd all seen that, but perhaps we haven't. Anyway, I wanted to mention that Chief King is quite happy with the fence as proposed. At seven and or eight feet. Um and I'm very happy to see Mr. Potter get his fence. He's put up with three years of construction on the front side. He's got another. Long piece of construction in the backside from the slide and anything we can do to help him be happier. In the meantime, I think we ought to do. So I'm I'm entirely supportive.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Uh and now we will move to uh Commissioner Helber.
I don't have any comments. I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you, sir. Uh Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Um I think because conditions have changed, it's reasonable to ask for this. Um I agree that the staggering is a little off, and because it's on a scenic corridor, it would be nicer to have something that is more fluid across. Uh my original question about the landscaping was in fact to make sure that we did have some sort of vegetative screening on the front because that um fence is so tall. Um if we can't, I understand, but one good thing is that there is a little bit different. Uh a change in architecture of the type of fence, which is nice, so it doesn't make it seem like it's one giant eight foot wall. So the. The fact that you're doing, you know, this feature is good. Also, you're going to make this one color unlike we see in this picture. So I like that. Um. And I think that uh that's about it. I am um in support of this project.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh Commissioner Teal.
Uh but I have no comment.
And I have no comment either. Um if you if you may, I I think I'm going to ask Commissioner Davis if you wouldn't mind making uh a motion. Because I think that the language that he provided during the questioner of questioning of Mr. Potter actually reflected the the will of the commission. Uh Commissioner Davis, would you mind making a motion?
Not at all, Chair. Thank you for asking. Make a motion that we approve this fence as presented. With the exception that Mr. Potter is allowed to build the fence to seven feet. And or eight feet. Um with variation if need be between the two.
Do I have a second? Saw Commissioner Bodie with his hand first. Uh and now I will uh do the roll call. Which I just want to be sure I got my list here. Uh Vice Chair Lester.
Hi.
Commissioner Bodie.
Hi.
Commissioner Davis.
Hi.
Commissioner Helber.
Hi.
Commissioner Teal.
Hi.
And I, Chair Hillis, am also an I. The measure passes unanimously. Uh thank you again to the applicant uh for answering our questions. And thank you to staff for uh your the presentation. Um we will now move on to item two on our agenda, a public hearing on state density bonus of Title Eight Planning and Zoning. Um I believe that Seth likely has a presentation on this. Director Hamed, would you like to say anything before a staff presentation?
Yes, so this is uh pretty straightforward. We brought it to the planning commission. As a study session, I think we got some robust discussion at that time and also direction to. Uh bring it forward and. More or less just moving along. Um. So what I will say is that there is no presentation tonight. Um because it's uh straightforward. We've carried forward uh the request. From the planning commission from September sixth, and we've responded to planning commission questions. Uh also, uh our uh principal planner has resigned, so we're back down to a shorter staff. Um so that's another reason we're just kind of, you know. Uh trying to make sure that we get items through that uh we need to. Um so with that, uh the planning commission is requested to conduct a public hearing on the draft amendments. Uh to the law and municipal code. Uh for the definition section, which is chapter. Eight point oh four. And this is pretty standard in order to include the dense state density bonus law definitions. And then also chapter eight point one seventy two uh to bring procedures. Um and regulations into compliance. And you know, mostly what I'm going to say is that the state density bonus. Law is already in place. What we're doing is just establishing the procedures to carry the state law forward. Um and to be consistent with our application to that state law. Um. And. We did have some really good questions at the September sixth meeting. And the questions were um regarding the affordability terms and when do they begin. Uh those actually, this is already in your staff report, but those uh are issued at the time of certificate, certificate, certificate of occupancy. That's when uh that month of time begins. And then the second question was the length of affordability terms for renting units in other jurisdictions. Uh we looked at Contra Costa County. And of the seven uh cities with inclusionary zoning, six of them require that renting units can be restricted. Uh to affordable for fifty five years. Uh and then forty five years for uh owner occupied. And then we also took a look at the inclusionary housing ordinance. And so this would be consistent with the inclusionary housing ordinance, and it would just create consistency between the two. And allow us to uh be more efficient when a project does. Uh so that is what we have. Um and we're requesting that uh the planning commission uh approves the request. Um. And uh we will then. Make. Approve the request with the recommendation to town council. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hamed, and we will now uh move to uh commissioner questions. And as stated before, uh we'll do this round robin. So please, um. One question uh and and then the answer, and then let's move on to the next commissioner. Um any commissioners with questions? I see the vice chair.
Sorry, I did miss being sick this discussion. However, I have one question, um and it's more of a verification of my understanding, which is that. This whole thing is based on an applicant requesting a density bonus, correct? There's no mandate. Upon development that anyone would have to request a density bonus, but this is more if someone comes forward, these are the protocols. I just want to verify that that's that's I. That's what I see in the state law, and that's what I'm reading in here, but I just want to verify I'm reading it correctly.
That's correct. It's an opt in.
Got it.
Um so if they request it, then that's when you would be required to put forth the application. So this is just procedure. To move forward with that application.
Great, thank you.
You, Vice Chair. Any other commissioners with questions? See Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Chair Ellis. Director Hamed, at our last meeting when we looked at this, the question was asked, is there's anything in here that goes above and beyond? What's actually required by the state? At that time, there were a couple of items. At this time, I don't see that. Is that accurate? Have those items been pulled?
Uh we are not doing anything above and beyond of the state.
Thank you, ma'am. My only question.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Any other commissioners? Just going to go through the list and feel free to tell me no. Uh Commissioner Bodie?
No.
Uh Commissioner Helber? Uh Commissioner Teal? Nope, uh I did have one question and I uh did get the answer to this later, but I just wanted it to be in the record. I know that. Um one of the questions that was asked at the uh the last meeting was in regards, I believe it was Commissioner Helber's. And if a if a a property uh was that uh gained the boat, the uh the uh the density bonus was refinanced. Apparently, there's a an ability for the property owner to no longer be affordable housing. I I believe I characterized that correctly. Um. Uh and I think that the uh. If I'm attributing that question to the wrong person or if I'm misremembering the question, I apologize. Um but uh I'll direct that question uh to a director of need and whether or not we were able to obtain any uh data uh regarding that.
We did review, but there's just not enough data on that. Um for us to respond to.
Great. Uh that was my only question. Um and now we will move on to the public comment. Um section of the meeting. Uh if any member of the public wishes to speak on this item, please utilize the rain hand feature of this webinar and we will call on you. And remember to state your name and address for the record. You will be given three minutes. Looking at, and I do see Dave Brizoni with his hand raised. Um can we please move uh Mr. Brizoni to the meeting so that he can ask his question or or provide his comment? Uh, Mr. Brizoni, you are unmuted, I believe. Um you'll be given three minutes.
Okay, great. Uh good evening. Ho- hopefully I'm unmuted. So I I have a couple of concerns and uh I I believe. This ordinance allows the ability uh to. Um include incentives. And in order to increase flexibility and um. Uh for providing affordable housing uh based on the housing element and inclusionary zoning. So I don't see where we're taking advantage of that. I know we've had some discussions about inclusionary housing. Uh we've been talking quite a bit about ADUs and there and ADUs is a. Uh an important mechanism to provide affordable. uh, an important mechanism to provide affordable housing throughout the, the community. So I have a couple of concerns. I'm looking at this ordinance and uh, from a applicant's perspective. And I'm, and I'm questioning, is it facilitating? Is it a streamlined process? Uh, do I get my answers quick and, quick and easy and soon? And as I go through the, you know, the, the different areas here in terms of plants, the middle and stuff like that, I'm not seeing that this is easy. I'm not seeing that it's streamlined. I'm not seeing where we're coordinating with uh, the housing element uh, and issues discussed in the housing element, including uh, possibly inclusionary housing uh, that the town uh, council is still going to weigh in on. So are we, I, I'm just wondering, I, I think we're a little premature and first of all, approving this ordinance as it is right now. And second of all, as it is uh, written there, I, I, I do, I don't see any streamlining. And you know, the state law is pretty clear. Uh, you know, it's supposed to uh, you know, provide reasonable documentation to establish eligibility. That's a big question to me. I don't see how uh, you know, we're easily establishing eligibility and provide uh, for the expeditious processing of the state bonus, uh, state density bonus. So I don't see how, how we're, you know, you know, jump-starting this or making this a positive experience for an applicant, applicant to go through. Furthermore, I, I believe uh, you know, the town council will be making some additional changes and or modifications to the housing element. And this document, this ordinance is a mechanism to facilitate affordable housing throughout our community. Uh, you know, I, I think this is an avenue where the town could add extra incentives for the, the, uh, for the production of affordable housing. And we're not availing ourselves of that opportunity. So if I've misstated, misstated something, you know, please correct, correct me. But I believe uh, you know, in order.
And Mr. Brizoni, I believe we are at time, sorry to, to step in if you wouldn't mind wrapping up your comment.
Okay, I guess I'm, guess I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Um, any other members of the public with comment? I don't believe there are other members present. Uh, I don't see other hands raised. Um, with that, I will close public comment uh, and bring this back to the commission, uh, for commissioner comments. Um, like as mentioned pre, uh, in the last item, we're going to take this round robin. Um, I, uh, for, for comments, I'll go uh, alphabetical. Um, Commissioner Bodie, do you have any comments?
No, I don't.
Uh, Commissioner Davis?
I may, thank you, Director, uh, Chair, excuse me, Director Hamid. Would it be a reasonable response to Mr. Brizoni that what he's asking about with the incentives is actually not part of what this particular ordinance covers? As this ordinance covers only the fact that there is a bonus, whereas the housing element covers how to go about getting the different pieces of the bonus. Is that, is that accurate?
Uh, to the chair, um, typically, we don't respond to applicants directly. Would you like us to clarify?
Uh, yes, um, if you wouldn't mind clarifying and also uh, providing the context of, of your response, um, a response to Commissioner Davis.
Okay, thank you. Um, happy to uh, jump in here. Um, so I will start and I would appreciate if our um, assistant town attorney could also help provide the clarification. Um, so there is an objective, a goal um, in the current housing element, which is the fifth cycle housing element, um, which pertains to state density bonus. And that's also been carried over to the proposed housing element, uh, which will be adopted hopefully in January. Um, so, and the state density bonus law is a state mandate. Um, as Vice Chair Lester clarified, uh, it's been opt-in for developers. It's not a requirement. Um, so any of the waivers or incentives are already defined uh, to the state density bonus law. Uh, we don't create those. Uh, there's a sliding scale. Uh, and so I think we provided a um, you know, we provided that um, at the council meeting back in April. Um, so it's, it's, you know, sliding scale. An applicant basically has to demonstrate that they are based on what they're proposing, that they would be eligible. And then basically we have an application process. Um, so that's how we would process it. Um, there is really nothing that if an applicant, if an applicant meets the requirements, there really is no um, additional requirements, probably than that. Um, so.
I think we may have lost Director Hamid, uh, but I also see the uh, the assistant town attorney has taken herself off mute. Um, while uh, the director is coming back. Uh, uh, Ms. Murphy, did you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you. I just also wanted to add that the um, ordinance itself also incorporates the state density bonus law. So we have a reference in there and all of the incentives that are currently in the state law are incorporated in the ordinance by reference. And with respect to the streamlining issue, the ordinance also incorporates the Permit Streamlining Act completeness requirements with respect, which includes some streamlining as well as um, incorporate a reference to the Housing Accountability Act and processing in accordance with uh, with that act as well. And I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
Thank you. And uh, Director Hamid, I'd, I'd asked Assistant Town Attorney to proceed while you're having a connectivity issue. Did you have anything further that you wanted to add?
No, no, I was just, um, uh, I think my screen got frozen, so sorry about that.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner, Commissioner Davis, uh, did that, was that responsive to your concern? Thank you. Um, and.
Make it perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and uh, with that, I just want to apologize. I said I was going alpha order, but I realized I was uh, uh, remiss in protocol. Um, and protocol dictates I should go to the vice chair first. Um, so with that, I will correct my error and then return to alpha order. Uh, Vice Chair Lester, um, do you have a comment you'd like to make?
Alpha, okay. Um, my only comment is that I just wanted to clarify that this wasn't some sort of a mandate or a ban. I think those are both not good policy tactics, um, and I don't believe it is. Um, and I think it's clear in terms of application, um, submittal um, and streamlining. And um, I am in support of moving forward with this resolution.
Oh, I was on mute. Thank you, Vice Chair. And with that, uh, Commissioner Holber, apologies for, for jumping the line there. Did you have any comment you'd like to add?
I have no comments or questions, staffs.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Teal?
Uh, I, I too have no comments or questions.
Thank you. And I also have no comment. Um, with that, I, uh, does anyone uh, have a motion? Uh, we do have a recommendation um, that I believe would need to be read as part of that motion. Uh, is anyone open to that task?
I will do that.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, uh, recommending that I make a motion to recommend the town council adopt an ordinance amending Maraga Municipal Code Section eight-point-oh-four-oh-two-oh, definitions of chapter eight-point-oh-four general provisions and the definitions and chapter eight-point-one-seven-two, density bonus of Title VIII Planning and Zoning of the Town and Maraga Municipal Code to bring the local ordinance into conformance with state density bonus law.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Do I have a second? I'll see Commissioner, Commissioner Helber. Um, and I will now move to roll call. Uh, Vice Chair Lester.
Hi.
Commissioner Bodie.
Hi.
Commissioner Davis.
Hi.
Commissioner Helber.
Hi.
Commissioner Teal.
Hi.
And I, Chair Hillis, I'm also an I, uh, that is unanimous. Uh, moving now to uh, item seven on the agenda, routine and other matters. Do any commissioners or staff have any routine or other matters they would just bring up in this area? Seeing none, we can move to reports. Uh, do any uh, members of the commission have anything to report? Seeing none, uh, I'd actually see Commissioner Davis. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Ellis. I have to report that I have taken a new job and it's going to require my general absence in many evenings. And I'm going to need to step down from this commission. I'm going to have to ask the council for permission to step down from this commission. But before I talk to them, I wanted to do you the honor of letting you know. I apologize for that, but it's, it's a cost of the job.
Thank you for letting us know, Commissioner Davis. Uh, we appreciate your service to the town. Um, and uh, good, best of luck in your, your new position. Any other, any other uh, members of the commission have anything to report? Uh, uh, Director Hamid, do you have anything that you'd like to report to the commission?
Yes, um, from time to time, we do get um, uh, planning machine trainings and some of them are true and they're really good. Uh, those run through, I think, ILG. Um, and there are some for specifically the Contra Costa County. Um, so I would, uh, I'm happy to follow those two, but I recommend uh, with so many laws changing and so many new laws uh, being introduced, even as we're working on our housing element, uh, that, you know, commissioners take advantage of those uh, trainings uh, because it will help to understand and get better context. Um, as well, that can do on many of these issues. Uh, and then the other second thing is, which you heard earlier, uh, our principal planner resigned, uh, so we're back down to a smaller staff um, and limited resources. Uh, so we'll continue to uh, go through and meet our priority deadlines. Um, and I would appreciate your patience as we're trying to propose for that position.
Thank you, Director Hamid. Uh, and now we will move on to the last item on our, our agenda, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone, for joining tonight. And again, thank you, uh, Commissioner Davis for your service. Um, uh, we will, uh, in, uh, I will follow up with you offline uh, to thank you myself. And uh, thank you, everyone, for joining us. See you next time.
Please let Mr. Potter have my email address.
Will do.
Happy to help.
Thank you, sir.
Cheers.
Bye. Thank you.